Raise your right hand. You, Richard Edwards, do solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia, and faithfully discharge your duties as city recorder of the said city to the best of your abilities to help you, God.
I do.
And Tom will be here in a few minutes. She got a hold of the court.
Okay. Mr. Edwards is officially the recorder, so he'll swear in the remainder of the candidates.
Here, you, Mrs. Alba.
Oh, my God.
Suitcase, my lunch. Do you want to sign for us?
No.
Okay.
I know.
We've really...
No, 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 I mean, leadership training together. Ambassadors. We are ambassadors.
We're fellow ambassadors.
Nobody knows what that is.
It's a crew.
Okay, I'm ready.
Raise your right hand. I, Mary Alba, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia, and faithfully discharge my duties as council member of the said city to the best of my ability to help me, God. I do. Congratulations.
Okay.
Sign.
And you didn't even put Mary Lou. Awesome.
Congratulations, Mrs. Alba, the newest member of the council.
Didn't put Mary Lou. No, I'm trying to drop that handle.
Let me say first, it's a privilege and honor.
Well, thank you, likewise.
All right, if you will, Mr. O'Neill, raise your right hand. I, Thomas J. O'Neill, do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of West Virginia, the Charter and ordinances of the City of Buchanan, West Virginia, and faithfully discharge my duties as council member of the said city to the best of my ability to help me, God.
I do.
Congratulations. Thank you. Calton? I need your famous drunk handkerchief right there.
Your notepad being the same size. Everything's mine's confusing.
That's a little big for me. I'm used to using smaller than that.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. We call a regular meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order. Ask you please join me in a moment of silence. We'll respect the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You, Representative Relay for Life, I have fuel that dulls me just for a moment. No, I'm going to walk down here and ask Jewel to meet me and anybody else with Relay for Life. Please. Right in here where the camera can get a good look at us. This says proclamation, whereas the people of Upsher County have been affected by cancer and the mortality rate from cancer in Upsher County is higher than the national averages. And whereas the American Cancer Society is celebrating its 101st anniversary this year and Relay for Life is a signature activity of the American Cancer Society, and whereas Relay for Life of Upsher County is not just a fundraiser, it is a unique activity that offers an opportunity to participate in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors, and remember those lost to the disease, to build a network of businesses and health organizations to address community cancer issues, and to recruit new volunteers to deliver American Cancer Society programs and services. And whereas Relay for Life of Upsher County has had a significant presence in our community for the last 15 years, has touched thousands of residents, and has raised over 1.5 million to help fight the battle of cancer, against cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the City Council of Buchanan, do hereby proclaim the month of July in the year 2014 as Relay for Life Month in Buchanan and urge individuals, families, businesses, schools, service organizations, churches, and neighbors to unite in the fight against cancer, to honor cancer survivors, and to remember those we have lost to cancer. Given under our hands on this third day of July of 2014 bears my signature as Mayor of the City of Buchanan, and I appreciate what you all do so very, very much. Will you applaud them?
Hey Jewel, you might want to announce when the, it's going to be like?
July 25th and 26th. And our theme this year is going to be Christmas in July. We invite everybody to come up and join us.
At the Upsher County Middle School.
Starts at 6:00 on the 25th and goes to 5:00 on the 26th. It's an all-nighter.
At the middle school.
At the middle school.
Thank you. Again, I say I really appreciate what you all do. How many of you are here and want to speak about the meth ordinance? Hands, show please.
Jesse Jovi. Melissa and Terry Mills.
Here for, but not necessarily speaking.
So we're going to move this, I'm going to pass you all over just for right now when we take up the meth ordinance. If you want to talk about it then, you might, is that good?
That's better.
All right, fine.
Mr. Mayor, we have a new reporter.
We have a new reporter?
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Is her name? See, I got that. And I'm not going to get the last.
But she can't remember it yet either. She's just new to the field.
Stand up and introduce yourself to the group.
So it's a record.
Very good.
Where are you from?
I'm from Hurricane or Hurricane, West Virginia.
No, it's Hurricane.
Hurricane, yeah, it's Hurricane. Been at the Record Delta for two weeks today, so I'm excited to be here. Thank you for having me.
Is it Western, right?
Yes.
Hope you stick around longer than most people.
I'll be there. There you go, making me feel bad.
Melissa tells me that she's leaving.
Oh, really?
She's going.
I didn't know she wasn't even here.
While we're recognizing people, I want to extend, not at the end of this meeting, but now would like to extend my congratulations to the folks who were victorious in the election. Return Tom O'Neill to the seat as City Council Member. We have a new city recorder in Rick Edwards, and we have a new city council member in Mary Alba. And I'm glad to see them all. Department Board Report, Michael.
I will keep it brief. I can sum up my report here in another page. We are finishing up the end of the fiscal year, which ended, of course, on Monday, so there's a lot of activity in the office. There's, of course, again, some of the older council members are familiar with and some of the newer ones. About this time every year, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we're required by state code to make two revisions. The first revision, which is in front of you tonight, deals with our coal tax. The second revision, I'll talk about a little bit later on for the next council meeting. But for business purposes, you do have in front of you Resolution 2014-15. It is the 2014-2015 coal tax revision. Again, by code, this is the first revision that we have to make when we start the new fiscal year. We have to report the ending fund balance that we have, ending the fiscal year in coal tax. That amount is $18,432. $18,432. It's going to be kind of towards the back of your packet if you're looking for that, council. We previously budgeted for the 14-15 budget, $4,000 that we thought we would end our fund balance with, and our highways at 14 were totaled $18,000. So all we are doing is actually adding the $18,000 to our budget as prescribed by code with our ending fund balance of $18,432. Our coal tax, just to kind of educate the newer folks on council, our coal tax is money that we receive from coal revenues municipalities in the state of West Virginia. I'll receive those, of course, as everybody knows, the coal industry unfortunately is taking quite a hit in West Virginia, so our coal tax collection is down. Coal tax can be used for street improvement projects, paving projects, et cetera. We actually filled up that fund since we don't receive that much in revenue annually now. Usually you try to build that up over three years and then make a good street project out of it. We actually did that with Pocahontas and Fayette Street last year, so we're rebuilding back up that fund, and hopefully in a couple of years we'll be able to do a nice street project out of coal tax. We're just not generating really enough revenue now because the industry's down to really get a good solid project going, so we kind of put that in reserve for a couple of years. But nevertheless, this is the revision for coal tax for the 14-15 budget. Unless there's any questions, this vote on this resolution, 2014-15, does require a roll call.
This is okay. Entertaining motion to approve Resolution 2014-15.
I move we approve Resolution 2014-15. Is there a second?
Motion to second, Council. Capari? Is there further discussion?
Not direct to record to call roll. May record to them.
Commander Davidson?
Yes.
Myself, yes. David Thomas?
Yes.
Thomas O'Neill?
Yes.
Ron Pugh?
Yes.
Mary Alba?
Yes.
And Brian.
The second item, before I finish with my presentation tonight, at the next council meeting, again, we are required by law to also represent our end of the year fund balance and general fund. I will tell you that we ended the year in our fund balance of $795,000. Seventy-five, $795,783.5. Can't forget the nickel. We did budget back in February and March. We had to show what we are estimating that our fund balance would be at the end of the year to start the new fiscal year. Of course, as council knows, I can budget somewhat conservatively. I had budgeted $550,000 that we would end the year with. Of course, we ended with more than that, which is a positive net difference of $245,783. At this time, before we get a general fund budget revision and resolution for the next council meeting, we need to take that money that I just mentioned, the $245,783, and reappropriate that, if you will. So probably the best thing to do, there's several commitments that council made in the last fiscal year, one of which is to finish Main Street. We still have a portion of Main Street, which I'm sure probably Jay will present to you later on. And also, we do have an appropriation that we need to set aside for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is the playground equipment for North Buchanan Park. Those are commitments that we already have, so we'll have to pull those out of the budget. Something that we can talk about prior to the budget resolution for general fund, which will be the next council meeting. But I know that some council members have opinions of what we should do with those expenditures, and I always try to give an opportunity for council to make their voice known so we can make those appropriations when we revise the budget next council meeting. So with that said, we do have some money that we need to reappropriate. Once you again look at the commitments that we have with Main Street and with the Land and Water Conservation Fund, it's going to leave us with roughly $146,783 that we need to appropriate in expenditures. And I'll need some direction of where council wants to go with that and where they would like to appropriate those monies. So I'm going to ask council for consideration of having what would really equate to a special council meeting or a work session next week so that we can discuss those appropriations so I can have those set for you for the meeting on the 17th. So I'm going to ask you all, if it is a good time next week for you all to meet.
Thursday?
Next week.
I'm going to be gone Thursday probably, out of town.
I'm planning to be out of town next week.
How about Monday of the next week, like the board council? On Thursday?
How much time do you think you'll need, Michael?
To be, well, to be honest with you, probably at least a half hour.
We just meet a half hour early on the...
Seventeen.
Or you need time to...
We always have board meetings in advance as council.
I mean, I noticed a discussion last year was fairly lengthy on some of the things that council was wanting to do. The only other option to do would be to take, if there's nothing, I mean, to take that $146,783 and go ahead and budget it into a line like Council Capital Outlay, and then we can make a revision later on as we go. The only thing I really need to go ahead and plug in the budget is I need to appropriate the monies for Main Street and the Land and Water Conservation. I could take the other $146,783 and put it in Council Capital Outlay, and then we can have a meeting in the future to determine where we want to do that.
And as you point out, those two projects, we have committed to.
Correct.
We have to do that. We're too far in to not finish that.
Yes, and well, the Land and Water Conservation, and I know Jay's reported on this in the past, if we do get that grant, from the moment we're notified, we have 90 days to expend.
Right.
So we need to put that money in there. If we don't get the grant, then obviously we can reappropriate the 69, roughly $69,000. There are two things that are really up for discussion aside from the remainder of the money. We did have, if council will recall, we did have a presentation from Laura Meadows with the CVB asking for some additional monies. And also, we had a proposal from Steve Foster with a development authority wanting to know if council would consider additional appropriations to them. And, you know, those issues were tabled until the first, you know, the first part of this fiscal year. And then, of course, the remainder of the money, you know, would be up for discussion from council.
On your rainy day fund, what percentage are we within hitting the, what we can exceed by?
Probably fifteen, maybe sixteen, seventeen percent. We can go up to thirty.
Why don't we just put in the, in that rainy day fund? That gives us time to deliberate how you want to use it over the next three or four months.
Only of us with the rainy day fund is council actually has to make a motion and go through an ordinance to actually pull those monies out.
I have to.
Yeah, there's a little bit more of a formalized procedure to do that.
It's not an ordinance, but it does require...
It's a resolution we have to do.
It's just a resolution. I think that would be preferable.
Or I can just put it in the Council Capital Outlay, leave that money in that, and we can withdraw from that.
We can spend that capital outlay for virtually anything.
We'll just have to reappropriate it. Take, for instance, if you want to put an extra $50,000 in street paving. Jerry would like that. We would just pull, we would just do revision to pull that out of Council Capital Outlay and put that in the street. We did this actually last year with some of the remaining money that we had and then driven from that towards the tail end of this fiscal year.
Paid off some debt.
Yeah, exactly. If council's not ready to make a commitment now, I just, I just have to put that money somewhere. I have to show it.
I think we should go ahead and put it into the council's capital outlay.
And that way we can talk about it later on.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be good.
It's a move that we've been making since Michael came in here, was to bleed money out of line items in the budget where we did not know where it was, and make it very clear where the money is. And we've got the half million dollars or so in the capital, in the rainy day fund, and we can have this money in our capital outlay, and we, the council, knows where the dollars are, and we can spend them as we see the need.
I just want to get a clarification. You don't need to do an ordinance for the rainy day fund. You can just do a resolution.
Correct.
Okay.
Then if that's okay with council, if that pleases council, then the resolution that you'll see at the next council meeting will show a budget revision for $30,000 for the Main Street to finish that, $69 for the money for our match for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and the remaining amount of $146,783 will be reflected in Council Capital Outlay to be determined later on. I do want to make one interesting note, if I may. We did end, again, did end the year with a balance of $795,783, which is actually one of the highest balance on hands we've had in the last six or seven years, with the exception of the first year that I was here when we got a little bit of, have a pretty good kick on our BNO tax board company that had to revise their BNO claims. The interesting thing about that is we ended the year with $795, and that was absorbing $100,000 that we extracted out to put, to assist the sanitary board with some emergency work on Brook Street, and a little over $100,000 that we expended on a public safety building, another one which I anticipate we'll have, we'll have in this fiscal year. So, I mean, just doing the math on that, that'd be roughly a little over $200,000. We would have had roughly about a million dollar balance on hand ending the year. Of course, with those, we did not, but we still ended up pretty darn healthy. So that is what I'll do, that's what I'll reflect, and at a future meeting, we can get together and hash out any appropriations addressing the CVB, the Development Authority, or any other paving projects or anything else you would like to appropriate that money to. Okay?
This is not a presentation. I just say thank you for your work on that, on the presentation.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
And caring for the money like you do. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Ron. That's all I have here.
Questions, further questions for Michael?
I actually understood it.
Great. Terry Arnold, street waste.
Evening. Consolidated Board Report. Consolidated draft on the 26th of June. Approved a request for a street closure from the CVB. Approved request for refund on a pavilion round at the city park. Michael presented the financial report. Money marked in checking is $98,307.62. Cemetery CD was $225,811.74. Denied a request for a refund on parking spaces due to lost parking during the strawberry festival. Also approved the notice to hire for a street physician. We had one of our street folks leave us, so in order to replace them, we had to advertise for the process now taking half the patients for replacement position. Had a letter of agreement, just as information with the Veterans Industries and with Jim Sportis. Also, Michael presented info regarding the governor's community participation funds. Received $1,400 to purchase a new, de-return, or park vehicles. Also, lulls of the consolidated meeting, I wasn't able to make it. Discussed, or the board approved the disposal of the old slot in the city park, which that has been done. It was to the scrapyard. Lyle and to a plant. And just the report on that, the new playground has been installed at the city park. And I went and did final inspection on it. Kids have been playing on it. Of course, I've got batteries.
Do we have a river, or river, a river ribbon cutting ceremony?
We have lawn.
We should.
Well, we were hoping to get that before school was out. We were going to have a shindig, but it...
Couldn't happen.
Weather will not...
Always.
Always cooperate.
But in the words of a couple of people I heard, relay awesome. That was the word that described the playground. We do have some continuing work up there. Hope to do some more work, particularly for play areas for younger children. And again, you know, that's probably going to be towards the fall of the year. We've got some infrastructure up there that we want to do also during the fall. But just to have a safe playground in place up there is great. Waste board met this evening, and they approved the continuation of fuel surcharge. And as a matter of info, presented some emails back and forth in regards to a surface slip at the landfill. He's going to be taking care of people, landfill closure assistance program. Also presented, we actually disposed of a, one of our closed top transfer trailers, which also went to scrap, actually received one of the funds from scrapping it out the one we have in the past and doing our auctions. So that was done. Transfer station totals for the month of June, we had 1,359 tons of material completed at a grand total of monies of $113,784.74. Recycling for the month of June is 68.2 tons. And for the second quarter of the year, we did 201.22 tons of material in recycling. Street report, again, we working at the park on the playground and completed that. Jay's going to report more on the public safety complex that we grew down there, and anticipate the start of Main Street, Gateway East, in a month. And that's all I have here, unless there's questions.
Question from Jerry.
Yeah. I went out and checked out the equipment, and I think it's really great. I want to ask you, I never knew there was a spring there until I was up there. Is there any concern with that?
There's fence around the top of Pam, and we've never had any issues with it. That spring is, I don't know what the actual data, Rich Quinones could probably tell you that one, but very, very old part of the park. And, you know, to do away with, I don't think, you know, if you want, completely fence it off, but again, we've not had any issues with that water.
I didn't know if filled up couldn't be a problem.
No, it drains. I think it drains.
It has an overflow that we actually installed. That's one of the things that's taken us along to get this playground in place. You remember that was a gully, and it was full of old decaying leaves. And actually, that material, our horticulturist, Robbie Barber, just about went crazy over...
Fought him for it.
Absolutely, because of that when we removed that. And what we did was we installed a drainage pipe, a French drain through that whole section underneath. Then we sealed that with clay underneath and did the clean stone. And then, of course, it has the full protection surface of the wood chips on top of that stone. So consideration was given to that underground water, so we have that drainage in place.
I was a child, and Ron probably has the same kind of recollection as maybe Jerry as well, that that slide that you threw away, I used to slide on that, probably bloodied my nose on it a couple of times. But we also, when we picnic there, would get water out of that spring. Of course, with the development up the hill, it got, but it was, it was potable water when I was a child.
Right? Yeah.
Now, you were a child a long time before I was.
Yeah.
I have a question. Did anybody contact you earlier this week about children playing signs down Randolph Street?
Yes.
Okay.
I did have a contact. They said there's two families with four or five kids down next to Emergency Squad or someplace down there. They're concerned because the cars are speeding too fast up through there, and they have these two families that the kids are in danger. So could we get, find out who, I mean, I know who the people are, if you want to contact them or what.
We have had, and Ron, just on that topic, we've had several inquiries of folks wanting social children playing signs installed for that very reason. Here's, here's my table on that. Just throw it out there. We put these signs up, and what happens is people become accustomed to seeing that sign up all the time. So they become complacent to the sign, much in the same way as the stop sign on Main Street sometimes. And what happens is they, doesn't curb the behavior, they still drive as fast. What we found works better is having a sign that can be put out at the curb and taken back in when the children are playing. That draws more attention than the signs being there full time.
Do you ferry such signs?
We do not. Actually, if you, if you, I've seen several folks around town have the ones from Sam's Club that has the little running child with the flag standing out. Those seem to be the best. We're not completely against it, but using those signs typically as in a playground scenario or where we have a crossing or like where the church put in the new recreational center there on Randolph Street. But if we... But if we put these up everywhere that we have a request for them, we're gonna have those signs in every neighborhood.
What's, what's your opinion on, on road humps, not bumps? Speed bumps? Speed bumps? Morgantown has installed those and they seem to work fairly well. And you can plow over them.
Humps.
The humps.
Speed humps.
Yeah, speed humps, you can plow over them.
Also, also had a discussion with a lady and if our skid steer had went down, we were gonna do some grindings across the street in places and experiment with that, particularly down on Franklin Street. That issue was there in the alleys, people speed, get through the alleys. So, rather than, rather than creating a speed hump or a speed bump, actually having a control throttle is what it would be. So, yes, there's, you know, the humps are manageable, speed bumps completely against the.
Bumps, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, speed humps, absolutely, that's something that could be done.
Real nice. What, what is the situation, address this to the officers back there, on our radar sign?
We can get it up and running, I have to get with Jerry and check the batteries again. But, you know, once again, it's the same signs, people get complacent with that. And we've also had reports that some people even try to beat that sign.
They want to see who can hit the best hump.
I think if it's switched around a lot, not left the same spot, perhaps that might help. One thing that's slowing us down on Florida Street and up in my area now has been the tickets that are being rigged for speeding. And I appreciate it. A lot of people don't, but I do.
I just think it's an overall lack of consideration and sensitivity to residential neighborhoods. And, you know, we've talked before about, I don't know what the solution is, we've talked about having a neighborhood watch. But it's almost to the point where you might be putting video cameras on corners in heavy traffic neighborhoods, because people, they just don't pay attention to that. I mean, they just go through stop signs and speed. Look at people on cell phones.
I tell you, the, down where my son and his family live in Proctorville, Rome, Ohio, they had those portable children that play signs out. And when they put them out, you could really see the traffic slow down. And when the kids went in the house, they took the sign. I think that's one of those, I was just impressed. In fact, I think I mentioned it to Jerry and others.
I'm impressed with that, too.
Several years ago, about how really effective that was.
I think it's effective, too, but I also think that we have an obligation to our neighborhoods and citizens to do all that we can personally, as the council, to, to control the speeds in the residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, with the police, for sure.
And I didn't know that that sign, slow children sign didn't work as well, but if, if we can consider the speed humps sometime in the future, or if we can purchase ourselves eight or 10 of those and just, if somebody wants to borrow one or rent one from us or lease it, sign their name, they'll return it. I think it's our responsibility to keep the speed down. It's their responsibility to keep their kids out of the streets, but it's ours responsibility to keep the speed down. And perhaps we can work together with, with the people in those neighborhoods to arrange with something that wouldn't be costly to them.
Are the speed humps easily, like, could you use it in one area for a while and take them up and take them down?
They're permanently fixed, actually grounded up out and put in a.
No, I'm talking about the big rubber things.
The big plastic things, again, you have to secure them some way by adhesive or by molding them down, so.
I mean, each lane is really bad, my four-year-old grandson even tell me they're going too fast.
You can't speed on Barber Street, that's for sure.
Four-year-olds notices that things.
Yes, sir. What's wrong? Jerry, thank you.
I have one for you.
Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
Jerry, I'm sorry. In front of the post office, that little crosswalk there, is that our, as far as?
It isn't, it doesn't need repainted and re-posted, Mary, we just haven't got.
Just, alright. Thank you. It's on the list to do.
Yeah, that, that list.
You mentioned that, but one thing that might concern you, too, on Festival Fridays is on Florida Street, down past where the Jawbone Park is. I noticed last week, there were cars that were definitely trying to rev up their motors and, and sound big and, and there's a lot of kids crossing between, back and forth between Stocker and the Jawbone for Festival Fridays. Whatever we can do about that would be appreciated, too.
They do, what you may be able to do there, Ron, some Festival Fridays, to set some, set some cones out at the curb line there just to kind of slow folks down.
That could work.
That may help, yeah. Yeah, that may help. I don't think you want to put a fine crosswalk in there full time.
No?
Yeah, I think, you know, you want something, again, like Pam said, something that can be removed at just at certain times during activities, you want to deploy that.
You think of maybe cones in the middle of the street?
Well, right, you could set one in the middle and just, just to.
To delay.
Exactly, to maybe slow traffic down. You're always gonna have, and nine times out of 10, the people that are doing the speeding, and Doug, Doug's better to speak at this than they are the same ones.
Can they are?
You have the same folks doing the same.
I saw the same truck go around three times.
So, again, a lot of times. We learned that recycling, sign, sign, signs, they're worked wonderful, you read them and understand them and folks want, but most people just ignore them.
Okay, Jay Hall, City Engineer.
Try to be short like last time. Nothing new to report on the FEMA Division of Homeland Security emergency grants. I left a message for the project administrator today and I hope to hear from, from him next week as to an update, does that status? And for the new board members, the council members, sorry, the new council members, that's where the city has applied for two emergency generators, one at the water treatment plant and the other one at the tentative booster station, so that the power goes out. We do not have an issue delivering the water that we treat, because we have a backup emergency generator at the water treatment plant to the outlying areas, PSDs. So, that's what we've applied for. The water treatment plant improvement project, I talked to Greg Belger today, he's the project manager for Chapman Technical Group, and they're approximately 45% complete with their design drawings and specifications. He's actually gonna come to the water board meeting next Thursday and update the council members personally and give them a, maybe a little more detailed status report for the water treatment plant project. Island Avenue, I hope to get started on it within the next three weeks now that the public safety complex is all but wrapped up as far as the interior work and, you know, we're getting ready to start on Gateway East. So, as soon as I bring my hands of those two projects, I want to concentrate on the Island Avenue water line project. The water storage tank inspections, those were conducted on June 18th and 19th of this year. All of them were done. Four of them are in very good shape, one of them, a little work, and one, the St. Joe Tape, which is what we're considering for decommission anyway in the near future, that was the one that had been given the worst grade. But those reports are due in July 19th, and once I have those, I'll report both to the council and the water board as, as to what we plan on doing there. McDonald Route 20 lane widening project, talked to that project manager last week and the West Virginia DOH has applied for a categorical exclusion to the Federal Highways Administration. And what that involves are those ongoing environmental issues at the intersection of Canola Street and East Victoria. So, if that categorical exclusion is approved, then they hope to go forward with the right-of-way acquisition and utility relocations. But they can't do anything until we hear back from Federal Highways. So, it's, it's in DC right now and hope to report back to you with something new next The Lumos fiber optic installation in Jawbone Park, I cut briefly on that last week, that is where Lumos is wanting to install fiber optic line across Jawbone, well, across South Florida Street in front of Rob's Gym and Fitness via directional bore and then turn a 90 degree and go up the alley. They're really anxious to get started with it. Sam and I have done our engineering review, as I reported, and approved. Dave and I spoke briefly, well, we haven't spoken briefly, we've been talking for the last three weeks regarding this issue. And we think we've come up with a solution in that we're looking at charging $5 a lineal foot for those easement rights for everybody, you know, not only Lumos, but everybody in the future. But they've really done things the right way. They've come to us with engineering proposals and, and documents, and as a show of good faith, they're willing to put up $5,000, you know, and that's more than what's gonna be required for granting them this easement to, so that they can start on the project. Whatever the difference is, we would, you know, refund to them. But they've also expressed the interest in having the property served to the left of Trader's Alley, because that property owner, Stephen Johnson, I want to say, he's willing to give a 10-foot strip to the city of Buchanan so that we can make some improvements in those alleys, maybe relocate some power poles where it's got that little dog leg or hump on it. He would like to donate a 10-foot strip to that. And Lumos is even willing to go pay for the survey, to find the locations of the corners and have that deet it up and survey so that they can install their fiber optic line in that portion of the alley. I think it's a good move for the city, I think it's something that we should consider very seriously and Dave and I will report to you if we hear anything else. And if Dave missed anything, just jump on in there, but that's where.
What kind of action can we do? I mean, it sounds like this is a project that's obviously very important to them. I mean, can they wait around for another two weeks, you know, for us to take action or is there action that we can take tonight to facilitate this?
In the perfect world, the council would give a go-ahead tonight. We do not have an ordinance that establishes this $5 per lineal foot thing that Jay and I have looked at. We have looked at data from all over the country and some places grant those rights ways as cheap as a dollar or two per lineal foot. Other places, it's like $18 a lineal foot. As you can imagine, if you're dealing with a big city, they milk it for everything they can. We think the low fair end of the spectrum is $5 a lineal foot. So, that would be the recommendation. While we would be preparing this ordinance, that would be a short suite to the point one, establishing that rate schedule, that fee schedule, given what Lumos has offered, but more, two and a half times more than what we believe the bill's going to be, up, and then we would rebate whatever is left back to them. Seems to be a very fair arrangement.
Can they, do we need to take any action to permit that?
I think a motion by council to allow Jay and I to go forth with preparation of the necessary agreement for the mayor's signature would allow us to expedite it so that we're not just beginning formally the process two weeks from tonight.
Oh, I assume.
I second.
I was made to second, if y'all understand what we're doing, you're giving me, in essence, the authority to approve an agreement based on advice of council and our engineer to proceed with this project.
To permit them to begin their placement of their lines.
Permit them to move along, yeah.
The property that the gentleman's wanting to donate to the city, going up Main Street and turning down Trader's Alley.
It would be on the right.
On the right.
Where the power poles.
Power poles are, okay.
That's where that 10-foot strip would come into a place, you know, in the place that, that alley we could actually straighten. And Jerry and Sam and I have actually looked at over about a month, month and a half ago. That affords us the opportunity, and there's another player who doesn't wish to be named at this time, would like to assist, maybe even split evenly the cost of relocating those two power poles, so that then it just cleans up that entire alley.
What property does he own?
He owns that strip mall, you know.
All the strip mall.
Where the, the Intermountain, the Pawn Shop, Fox's Pizza, you know, he owns the back.
You ready for the question? All in favor, signify, so I'm saying aye. If there's no, yes, have it, thank you.
Gateway East, as Jerry briefly touched on, we, we hope to start on Monday. We're gonna start at College Avenue Inn, work our way this way. Hopefully, it goes a little quicker than last year, we had a little learning curve there, but the weather also always plays havoc, so we have to have that project wrapped up by November. I put an ad in the paper, the 18th and the 20th notifying everybody of the new traffic patterns, and again, that will go into effect next Monday, where we're blocking off East Main Street at half-block sections. You'll still be able to access your properties through the alley and through, by Factory Street or Sedgwick and College. We just ask that you do not park on the half-blocks that we're working during the day, because we don't need to work around your vehicles. But that's where we are on Gateway East. Public safety complex, we are basically finished on the inside. Got the approval from the fire marshal yesterday to occupy. The police department have already started moving in their furniture, well, most of it's in. There's a few smaller pieces and now they can actually start the two to two and a half week process of moving files and paperwork and all that. But it is ready to be occupied and I'm sure we'll have a ribbon cutting and grand opening ceremony on that. And it's nice, the street department has done a real good job and we've been shorthanded a couple months, because we've got so many projects going on, but they did it and they are to be applauded. You know, Jerry pat him on the back for me, but it's, it's been nice. Corridor 8 South Water Line, that's where we're looking at extending a water line on the south side of Corridor 8 from the Hampton Inn out to where the Shaws have their development just after Smitty Suzuki, but on the other side of the corridor, nothing new to report on that. Sam and I may have something in, in two weeks, but that's all I have unless there are any questions.
A question for Jay. Thank you, Jay, thank you. Dave McCollough.
Thanks, Mayor. Several updates and then I've got some stuff for you to take up under your new business. The Sudden Lake matter, I met for five minutes shy of four hours with Peter Brown and David Bach, who is Director of Operations statewide for West Virginia. He's one of the very premier, primary players for that entity. Sudden Lake is now the seventh largest telecommunications company in the world. What came out of that discussion was my very frank sharings with our frustration that after eight, nine months, we still have the trespass with Cemetery Hill. We've been told that as part of our franchise renewal, there won't be any new programming coming for our residents and their subscribers. And Mr. Bach intervened, said that the singular point of contact that I will have as we negotiate these things in the weeks to come will be with Peter Brown. Peter has been promoted to resolving any and all matters with Buchanan. We don't have anything firm yet, but some of the things, he asked for some examples as to how Sudden Lake previously partnered with the city. And so, well, things like helping us establish the computer lab at the Stocker Youth Center several years ago, offering the wireless internet free there throughout that building, different things of that sort. So, he said, well, where is this Stocker Youth Center place? We left lunch, walked over to Stocker Youth Center, met Deborah Brockelman, she gave a quick tour of the complex. There's a couple of nice big screen TVs there that people have donated to the facility that Deborah said, you know, these TVs, the way things are wired here, we only get four channels. And Box said, Peter, get on that, he's got boxes, he'll fix that up for you. So, I don't know if that problem's been resolved yet, but you get the idea. We went up and toured the computer lab and he said, how old are these computers? And Deborah indicated to him that they were about three years old. He said, we can do butter in a can with Peter. I think we're probably gonna get some new technology and faster modems and things like that with the computer lab, or the eight terminals in the kids' computer lab there. Then we walked over to the public safety complex and we're all very proud of that to show it off. Went into the future Strategic Task Force Management Conference Center, whatever we're gonna call that room that's a ways off. And Mr. Bach, who started out with the company about 30, 35 years ago, or predecessor, Charter Communications, as a lineman, observed the ethernet that had been installed for various purposes and says, you guys don't have a screen in here yet, how are you gonna do this and how are you gonna do that? And it was stuff over my head and he said, consider us a partner as you go forth with this project. We'd like to help you establish a. We'd like to help you establish a first-rate facility in the conference center. I think what came out of this four hours of discussion was a recommitment by Sutton Lake to wanting to return to that previous sort of partnering feel that we had with the company and that we're not going to be treated by somebody as a big company executive and a little country bumpkin town. I thought it was, it was very promising. So Peter and I are going to meet probably again next week. Whatever wish list we have, technologically speaking, communicationally speaking, I think we create that list and see how many of those things that they may assist us in. That would be a far better outcome than arguing somewhere between, say, $5,000 and $10,000 as to a right-of-way kind of a payment that, you know, you get that one time and they maintain their distance with us just like they always have.
Well, it seems to me that in the past, when we were dealing with Peter Brown, we had this kind of relationship. We could talk, he'd say, I can't give you a channel. I just can't do it. But I can help you out. We had free connectivity at the vocational school, you know, we just, we worked together. When Mr. McCauley came on, it seemed like that all went away. And Peter was going to, I don't do that anymore, yeah.
I think for a first of what would probably be several meetings, it couldn't have gone any better. And I don't, I don't think that Mr. Bach was just blowing smoke. I think it's, it's going to-
Well, we'll find out, sort of.
We will, we will.
I think it's fantastic that they've come around and are going to work with us, Mr. McCauley. I think you should be applauded for doing that with them too. However, I think as much as we get all these freebies for as far as the help with the computer lab and with all that, the people out there that have the cable system are still getting crap. I mean, they still have nothing new to watch. They're taking channels off instead of putting channels on. When do we start considering and when do we start asking them, what are you going to do for our citizens out here that have, that pay the bills every month?
If Mr. Brown and Mr. Bach did not go so far as to say that programming discussions are off the board, but they did explain that there are millions of subscribers that they have now throughout the country, that there is a fairly standard array of channels. For example, I know some folks had mentioned their ire over the game show network going off a couple of months ago. Channel 57, which is now much Albert Aubel's glee, is NBC Sports, I think, right? But in any event, that came, I asked about that. I said, how does this come to pass? Back in the day, we would have discussion about it and so we reached an impasse with this company. They wanted way more than what we were prepared to offer per subscriber. And we took a, we took a stance with them rather than be extorted. We said, no, until you are reasonable, we're not going to carry it. Now, if you want to be reasonable in the future, we'll talk to you. Based upon what he was telling me, some of these decisions that they make in-house, it's not made in a vacuum. It makes sense from their perspective, even though we end up as subscribers not liking those moves.
I have never, I've heard lots of people from Buchanan that say, oh, my gosh, the cable system where my brother lives or my sister or my kids live is so much better than what we have. But I have yet to hear one person from another town saying Buchanan's cable system is better than what they have. It's, I think it's disparaging that we just can't get anything done for the citizens where we're going to take these negotiation tactics and get something done for the city or somebody else that isn't going to benefit a darn one of those senior citizens out there on fixed income. And that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
I think there is room for programming discussions. And if we can evolve to that point where there are some specific things that we believe would best serve our constituents and you'd want to get the input of the TV Cable Board too, I think we could have another combined meeting sometime in the next month or two and have Peter come in and say, okay, here's 10 things we'd like to say and see how he responds to it. It might all be known.
What's the contract up to December 31?
So it's time for the-
Yeah, we gotta get moving. Well, Dave's been telling us for 18 months, we need to get moving.
When's the TV Board meet again or when's the last time they met? Four years ago?
No, it was last October, something like that. But it's been about nine months. And that's not askew from what we, typically, we meet about once a year, sometimes more if we're looking at franchise renewal, sometimes more than a year, depending upon what the issues are. So why don't we work to schedule a working meeting with them and anybody out there in TV land or, you know, listening to council meeting can contact the folks here at City Hall, Teresa Summers, or call me at home and we'll put it on the wish list and we'll take it up with. Good luck.
Dave, thanks. I got a question. When you're talking about Stocker and the computers and the big screen TV, what kind of, I'm not saying we censor, but what do we know that's maybe would not be appropriate for the children to having access to either on the computer or-
I don't know, I have no idea. Since they only have four channels right now, it's pretty safe to say that it's, you know, nothing bad for the kids, but I can only assume that Deborah and her extensive staff with the Westland Work Studies and volunteers and all of it, that those things are policed over there. But I'm not over there every day or every week to be able to-
I would say they were.
And we haven't had a report from Deborah for quite a while, as far as I can remember, maybe my numbers.
I'll try to inquire with her about that, see what the TV watching policy is.
Couple of other things and I'll shut up. The drug task force matter that we raised at the last meeting, you have in your packet tonight, just a few days ago, I did get another letter from Bill Eelenfeld. It shouldn't come as any surprise. It's dated June 23, but it didn't come in until last Friday, I believe. It's to me, from William Eelenfeld, United States Attorney, Northern District of West Virginia, regarding request to participate in funds seized from Hot Stuff, Cool Things. Dear Mr. McCauley, thank you for meeting with the Board of Directors of the Greater Harrison County Drug and Violent Crimes Task Force in Bridgeport, along with Michael Doss and Chief Matt Gregory. Unfortunately, for the reasons that were discussed with the three of you, the Board voted against sharing a portion of the proceeds from the Hot Stuff, Cool Things investigation with the city of Buchanan. However, the Board is more than willing to assist with the VNO tax issue that you raised and also to continue the discussion that was started about Buchanan's participation in a drug task force. A number of possibilities were mentioned and if you are still interested in pursuing this, please give me a call and I will make sure that it happens. Take care and I look forward to talking to you again soon. Sincerely, William J. Eelenfeld II, United States Attorney. I did attempt to contact Jeff Worders, the Police Chief of the City of Philippi. I think he's on vacation the last week or so. And Doug Lowden, who's here tonight, and Matt Gregory stood, has met with Adam Gissy, Sheriff of Lewis County. So we have started this process of reaching out to determine with our area colleagues to the immediate north and to the immediate west, their possible interest in coming together to do a similar tri-county kind of a task force as they have with Randolph, Pocahontas, and Tucker Counties. The value with smaller, less populated rural counties coming together to do this, it's not just one big entity bearing the cost of perhaps hiring an investigative officer. Harrison County has two substantial cities and a bunch of other small ones. I mean, Clarksburg and Bridgeport's net revenues are gigantic, enormous compared to what we have in Buchanan. So, and that doesn't count Schinston and Lumberford and, you know, all the other places that Salem that comprise Nutter Ford, Stonewood, I forget, I think there's eight or nine smaller cities in addition to Clarksburg and Bridgeport. All of those entities kind of go together to help pay the freight, to have the full-time investigative staff. In order for us to really put a dent in the war on drugs, you're probably going to have to evolve to a full-time officer investigator and it would be tough for a city the size of Buchanan to justify going that alone. So we're still in the seminal parts of reaching out to the communities around us to see what we might be able to create. And it sure helps if you can have Bill Eelenfeld send out a letter to them, say, hey, we're going to have a meeting, maybe in Buchanan, maybe in Weston, maybe in Philippi, where we'd like to bring all interested parties together. Put it on your calendar if you're interested, come to the meeting, so.
Can I just make a recommendation based on my own experience? My first job, you know, in law school was with the prosecutor's office in Taylor County and they had the Tiger Valley Drug and Violent Crime Unit, which was, memory serves simply Taylor County Sheriff's Department and the City of Grafton Police Department. Now, there may have been involvement from Barbour County as well, but I just don't recall. In any event, I mean, it's not, my point is, it's not unprecedented for small jurisdiction police departments to have drug and violent crime task forces. And maybe it's worth it to, you know, reach out and try to, you know, glean some, you know, the institutional knowledge that came from, for all I know, I don't even know if that unit is still in existence or not, but maybe, you know, a call up to the folks up in Grafton could, you know, provide some benefit of what are the particular, you know, pitfalls that come along with putting a unit like this together in a smaller jurisdiction? Not just something I throw out there, it's just a suggestion.
Bill Eelenfeld has already committed Brian Perkey from the Harrison County Drug Task Force and, is it Bill Bennett, Doug? From the Mountain Task Force, that's Randolph, Tucker, Pocahontas, to assist us in the organizational efforts when it comes to pass.
So I know with Tiger Valley, I mean, I don't even think, they didn't have, they didn't have any full-time dedicated task force members and I would anticipate that this one, you know, wouldn't either, at least at first. And whereas, you know, the Harrison County area, I'm sure, you know, does have full-time members, you know, there might be some, there might be some value there, for what it's worth.
We'll reach out there, but it's got some help with us getting this thing off and started. What else do I have for you? Earlier in the week or last week, as the first draft of the agenda came out, there were two other ordinances that you're not taking up tonight that were on the first draft concerning the establishment of the military and the college zones. In my zeal, as we were looking to set the agenda early, I'd forgotten to consult Chapter 8A of the code, which requires those matters to be first approved by our planning commission. So working with Mr. McCauley, we're going to get that scheduled first, have them look at it so that the ordinance can in fact recite that. Planning Commission really likes this stuff. City Council, please, like it too, so it's coming. Last thing is just a public service announcement update. The middle school Ucare pool party is this Saturday. The middle school pool party is 7 to 10 as opposed to the high school pool parties, which are 8 to 11. Unfortunately, our first high school party was stormed out a couple of weeks ago. And it's, anybody who's on council can come out and feel free to help chaperone the pool parties. It's a lot of fun. We have Brad Lunsick comes there and it's always, always a good time. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Question for Dave. In your correspondence, you have a request from the Housing Authority to reappoint Sarah Carr as a member of the Board of Commissioners. And we'd had this earlier and I guess I will take responsibility for dropping the ball. When I talked to her on the phone, I said, I think we approved that. I searched the minutes and we did not. So I would entertain a motion to reappoint Sarah Carr to the Board of Commissioners of the Buchanan Housing Authority.
Motion made in second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Her later asked us to respond in writing. The other item in correspondence, you have copies in your packet of the Oath of Offices by our three new members of council and two new members and one returning member of council. Under consent agenda, we have proclamation, which we already gave out here to the seating. Agreement between the US Veterans Affairs of the City of Buchanan regarding transitional workers, we've had that discussion. For those of you who were not sitting here, you need to understand that we've made an arrangement to temporarily employ and help train veterans. And that's what it's about. So we're, and I've already signed that agreement. Approval of minutes of regular meeting, June 19. Approval of billing and wiring permits and approval of payment of bills would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, motion by all, all in. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, if you. Any discussion or questions? Not all in favor, signify, so the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Strategic issues for discussion and vote. First reading, ordinance 382 for annexation, press report.
Mayor, just step up here and, yeah, the plot that was actually prepared by the folks, they operate now as IAA, Interstate Auto Auctions out of Chicago, Westbrook, Illinois. They still, the property, the 13 acres that they own to pretty much the south of this five-and-a-half acre area that we're talking about, is still titled with ADS, Auto Disposal Systems Incorporated, which is a higher corporation. Think of it as sort of a subsidiary or one of the many, many companies that this huge outfit out of Chicago owns, IAA. There are actually three parcels or tracts of land that would be involved with this annexation. They are all owned by Delta West Limited Liability Company, which was established many years ago by Dave Rexrode and then he took on other partners over the years that Delta West has existed. And one of those partners with Delta West is Steve Holmes, who has executed the petition that's in your packet tonight on behalf of Delta West. The biggest part of this 5.4 acres that they would like to see annexed will be leased to ADS slash IAA. The two pink pieces are convenient to bring in because they will facilitate from a road perspective of what goes on within this additional 4.94 acres that is the lease area. The other reason, this area down here, we already have, basically on all sides, the pink strip has been annexed into the city limits. With annexation, you cannot create islands where you have either unattached areas of a city. In other words, we couldn't go out to Hodgesville and say, well, let's go in and bring, there's six people out there that want to be residents of the city of Buchanan. We would have to, we could create a peninsula, but we would have to attach it to the city proper in some way. Similarly, you cannot have an area that is totally surrounded by a city that is not within the city. So to facilitate that result and to also facilitate the primary use of these properties, these two little pink pieces that I'm about to explain to you in the ordinance, that amount to a little less than a half an acre are also being brought in. So without further ado, on first reading, and this would be the first of two readings, this is ordinance 382 of the city of Buchanan, an ordinance providing for the annexation of three tracts of land, aggregating approximately 5.4 acres, more or less, situated along or near the eastern side of the Brushy Fork Road, being Upsher County Route Number Seven and Buchanan District of Upsher County, all into the corporate limits of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the annexation by petition method as established by Chapter 8, Article 6, Section 4 of the West Virginia Code. And quickly, whereas Chapter 8, Article 6, Section 4 of the West Virginia Code as amended provides for the governing body of a municipality to annex additional territory into its corporate limits by ordinance upon a majority of the qualified voters and freeholders of the proposed additional territory. additional territory, filing a petition to have their real estate annexed. Qualified voter under this section of the code, 864, says anybody that has a leasehold interest, some sort of other non-ownership interest in the property. For instance, at one point years ago, we were looking at the Shawnee Terrace Apartments, bringing that into the corporate limits. In order to have accomplished that, it wouldn't have been enough to have just gotten the fellow over in Parkersburg, who now owns Shawnee Terrace Apartments. We would have had to have gotten a majority of the tenants in that complex. Because those tenants, almost all of them probably have automobiles, and as a consequence of the city bump, the ad valorem on being in corporate limits of a city, they might pay $5 more a year on their car tax, as their personal property taxes was all that. So they have a stake in being heard. In this case, there is only one qualified voter who is not the freeholder. That is, the entity ADS doing business is IAA. And there is only one freeholder. That is, there's only one owner, that being Delta West. So that's what we mean.
And I'm not interrupting you, but there's a question that I had, it leads to the interesting situation where you have a corporate entity being identified as a qualified voter, which is, you know, unusual, but in this case, that is.
Unusual, but that's exactly what the state code provides. Yep. So, whereas the three tracts of land aggregating approximately 5.4 acres, more or less, have been identified for annexation into the corporate limits, and whereas appears that all of the qualified voters and freeholders, well, I need a majority, but in this case, it's 100%, that is, owners of the three tracts of land have duly petitioned the city of Buchanan to have their real estate annexed into the city of Buchanan's corporate limits pursuant to state code. And whereas Chapter 8, Article 6, Section 4E specifically authorizes, but also limits, one signature on a petition per parcel of property. And whereas all of the qualified voters and the single freeholder, being the owner of the three tracts of land sought to be annexed, have filed with the city of Buchanan their qualified voter or freeholder petitions requesting the subject real estate to be annexed into the corporate limits of Buchanan. And whereas the city of Buchanan has enumerated the total number and verified the identities of the eligible petitioners in the manner required pursuant to state code, said information being fully contained and set forth within that certain chart, appearing herein after, specifically listing the qualified voters and freeholders and their real estate interest by tax map and parcel number and quantity of acreage leased or alternatively owned. And whereas a map accurately showing and depicting the real estate proposed for annexation by the petition method, all as is established pursuant to Chapter 8, Article 6, Section 4 of the code, have been prepared, a copy of which is attached here too, and expressly made a part of your oath. Whereas the council of the city of Buchanan is now satisfied that the petitions herein filed are sufficient in every respect. And whereas the council now desires to approve in every respect the subject request for annexation. And finally, whereas the council further desires to authorize the mayor of the city of Buchanan, upon final passage and adoption of this ordinance, to execute and then deliver an appropriate certificate, as described pursuant to Chapter 8, Article 6, Section 4G of the West Virginia Code, unto the Upsher County Commission, to then fully effect said annexation pursuant to state statute, now therefore be it ordained and enacted by the council of the city of Buchanan as follows. Down below, under the findings of council, you see where the three tracts are identified to the thousandth of an acre. Again, this would be a two-reading ordinance. It is my strong recommendation to the council that you pass this on first reading this evening. I would just remind the council that as a result of this five acres being added to ADS, they have authorized the hiring of five new full-time employees with benefit packages that Michael Madden, their vice president, told me would average in the $60,000 to $70,000 range per year per employee. So I said, why not? It's a good thing for the folks of Buchanan.
Okay, motion to approve on first reading, ordinance 382 of the City of Buchanan.
Aye.
Motion made, second. Is there discussion?
I have just a question, and I'm hoping that Dave can, I didn't know we were going to talk about this today. I need to look at the map real quick. Yes, this is the movie theater over here, this is the Brushy Fork Road. This pink section that Mr. McCully's talked about is the way that Mr. Holmes and/or Rexrode will access property on the other side. My concern is, this is also the location that we have installed our new water line to the Army National Guard. And I don't know if it has to be included in an ordinance, or we need to take care of that, but we had very difficult time here, and we had to cross through their fenced-in property, you know, moving cars. We could only work a certain amount of footage a day because of keeping the site secure and everything. My concern is that that's the main 12-inch line, if something breaks, we need it to be in there immediately. I don't want to be moving hundreds of cars and taking down fences and dropping the security, contacting the security company to, we're going to go through the fence. Is there a way that we can reserve out that 15-foot strip, seven and a half on one side of the water line, and seven and a half on the other side? It's on our right-of-way. Is there a way that we can prohibit the building of a fence over top of that right-of-way? So if we needed to get in there and work on that water line?
I can't.
That's my big concern, you know? I don't want to have to go through that again to work on our water.
I can't imagine that would be an issue. The fellow came to meet with us all the way from Chicago and seemed just, you know, very accommodating, whatever we could do for them, so.
I mean, it would take away a row of park, you know, 15-foot is a car, every eight feet, 10 feet.
They can't build a fence on the city.
It's not permanent, but I mean, that's the thing, you know, permanent structure.
Structure, right-of-way.
But it was very difficult working in that 700-foot strip where we had to call the security company and let them know what's going on, turn the fence off, move cars, backfill. If there's just a way that we can prohibit those activities, no staying to the north or off of our right-of-way of the water line, that would be my only suggestion to the council.
And how many feet, Jack?
Well, that section right there is approximately, that's 400, 400, 800, 800 to 1,000, because right here is also the section that, oh, they're not going to go after that section now. You know, there's a right-of-way that's not shown, because I guess they're not going after it, but we need to make, we ran along the property line on purpose in order to minimize impacts on, at the time, Delta West's holdings. We just wanted to minimize the water line. So it looks to be about 800 to 1,000 foot of right-of-way. I don't have it right off the top of my head, but that's my concern there, is we just don't put a fence and/or cars over that water line, that's the main line for the battle.
Of course I have, would the annexation make a difference one way or the other?
They cannot, they cannot expand their operation under state law unless they are in the corporate limits.
And also, I have a question, should we not mark that before we go in and do that? If it's not marked, identify?
Well, I think this is a question that hasn't a thing to do with annexation. And because annexation is the property becoming in the city limits. The other thing is trying to negotiate with them about reserving our water line right-of-way permanently.
Right.
And asking them to do that.
Oh, but it's a major carrot.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's our big carrot.
Right, right. And so I think we can, we can probably work through this.
This is the same company that we've already worked with to get a substantial part of the right-of-way, so I think we'll get there.
Well, let me just make a statement that, when they first were wanting to establish that facility out there, I was down the other end of the street at the county commission, and state law will not permit any kind of a salvage yard within a certain distance of a four-lane highway, period. They can't do it. But if it's in the city, then the city's ordinances prevail.
In that weird instance.
It was certainly weird, and they come, they'll please let us in. And that's what this is. This is a please let us in because we can't expand under state law. So I think we could ask them about this water line, probably, as Tom observes, there's a carrot. I think they'll cooperate if they understand, but we need to make them understand.
But if they reject the carrot, we still have options.
Question's been called on ordinance 382, all in favor, signify so, saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. First reading. First reading, ordinance 383, meth abatement.
Okay, toward the end of your packet. This ordinance was once ordinance 379, 380, 381, 382, and 383. Ordinance number 383 of the City of Buchanan. An ordinance one, adopting aid, United States Environmental Protection Agency's Guidelines for Meth and Methil Laboratory Cleanup, revised in March 2013. And B, the State of West Virginia's Code of State Rules, Title 60, series 92, entitled Clandestine Drug Laboratory Remediation, enacted pursuant to Chapter 68, Article 10, Section 1 et cetera, the West Virginia Code as amended, two establishing notification procedures, and three establishing violations and penalties. I am not going to read those three pages.
Yeah, we've been through this.
Yes. This would be a two-reading ordinance. Second reading, of course, would be on July 17. I do have just a handful of things that I would like to observe, because the words have been bandied about during our six, seven months' worth of discussion about this ordinance, that this ordinance is unnecessary, that it is redundant of state law, and there are a half dozen things that make this ordinance very important. It's not entirely redundant of state law. These differences in this ordinance from the state law have all been recommended by the State Department of Health and Human Resources. This is what they have been lobbying for to change in the state statute, and because of other battles being waged relative to West Virginia's war on drugs, this is the Sudafed restriction that they attempted, they got to put all their eggs in one basket with that. But this is what Brandon Lewis, this ordinance that we have here tonight, is what he believes should be the model for the entire state of West Virginia. Now, the things that are in this ordinance that are not in the state statute, first, the adding a local level of protection. I think someone used the expression before, that the city zoning housing enforcement officer is essentially deputized. And that's what the council was doing. You would be deputizing that person to be able to affix signage, to restrict access to a meth-contaminated area faster than what the average turnaround is right now coming out of Charleston, which according to Brandon Lewis is about three weeks. So signage could go up same day, next day. Two, it establishes a faster property owner notification system than what is presently the result of the state statute and the DHHR's administrative rule and regulation. Notice would essentially be given immediately to the property owner. Three, it establishes a registry of persons who have been identified, not prosecuted, not found guilty, but who have been deemed by the city zoning housing enforcement officer, taking his Ps and Qs from the DHHR office. It establishes a registry for everyone to know who these problematic folks have been so that they don't repeat the problem. Four, it adds penalties for both state and/or local sign removal. That is not currently a penalty provided for under the state statute. And it also, five, establishes the federal voluntary guidelines that were adopted 16 months ago by the federal government. Understand, those guidelines are not compulsory. They were established as guidelines to facilitate the adoption of ordinances by states and local municipalities, just as this ordinance does. In some of those instances, and according to Brandon Lewis, all 17 of the meth contamination abatement contractors are well versed with both the state law and the federal EPA guidelines. In some instances, not many, but in some, the federal guidelines are more stringent when it comes to the actual abatement, cleanup of the drug problem, the drug lab residue, than are the state statute, the administrative rule and regulation. So, you have it before you on first reading.
Comment, please. I think that, why do we not take this ordinance and just write a letter to the municipal leg or the legislature and asking them to consider this and to do legislation affecting this problem, instead of us passing this here on a local level? Why do we have to get involved with it on a local level?
Do you want to answer? I mean, I wouldn't have it answered, because part of the ordinance is to deputize our local officials to do certain tasks. I mean, I see where, I know where you're coming from.
Exactly. I don't see any difference in this ordinance being passed here or letting the legislature do it than what my suggestion was, with the ALPRs, and letting us take a vote here on that, and then sending it on to the legislature. Also, I do not think that this ordinance, this meth ordinance, has enough, in essence, doesn't do anything that's really needed, other than what the state already has encompassed. We can't do anything that's any more than what the state has done there, because it's an all-encompassing law for them now. The law that affects it on enforcement is the same as what we all hear. We have a few additions to it that Mr. McCully seems to think are necessary. I personally don't think they're necessary. I don't think they're necessary to have a registry here, because by some chance, somebody is making meth and happens to do it in my backyard, and then my name comes out on a registry. I don't think that the fines for taking signs off of buildings, which you're going to find the person for doing that, but you're not going to pay for taking the sign off if they're found, there's no need to have it there to start with. And those signs, I understand, are permanently affixed, somewhat as if the license plate stickers on our vehicles. I'm not in favor of this at all. And if it's allowable, I will make a motion that we do not approve it tonight, that we in fact do away with it completely until the legislature takes action, whatever they deem necessary.
What's your motion, Ron?
I move that we do away with this proposed ordinance completely and leave it up to the West Virginia Legislature to pass and send on back to us what they deem necessary.
I'd like to second that.
Motion made, second. Is there further discussion?
Go ahead, David.
Well, I, I think there, one of the issues I have, David, and I think there's some, I think there's some good things in the ordinance, but I also sort of lean toward what Ron is saying, but I want to try to take a larger view of this. And I think one of the positive things that have come out, I think there are some very positive things that have come out of you reading this ordinance to us several times. I was real impressed with the presentation we had last council meeting about the potentiality of working with the Harrison County Drug and Violent Task Force. And I think that, I think that one of these things we need to take a look at is really having a, moving that forward, either ourselves or with Barburg County and Lewis County. And then taking a look at these kinds of scenarios with meth abatement and other kinds of scenarios. I'm really concerned that sometimes we tend to piecemeal things together rather than take a look at everything and have a plan. And so I'm in favor of some of the things that are in this ordinance, but I'm also, I'd rather do it in the context of the task force that we're going to be looking at for the future. That's my position.
And, yes, you can. Certainly. I'm not totally in favor of the ordinance either. And I, nature, my nature is to do some review, and I have. And I was here at last council meeting listening about the task force thing. And then I was thinking too, why not have a combined thing, a committee to work together with the police, maybe a couple of board members here, or whatever, to throw these ideas all in one kettle and shake them out, which is the best, okay? But the main thing I wanted to say is in defense of the landlords. The landlords are business people, the majority of the ones, that, there's a lot of them that are city residents. And I believe that we also have a responsibility And I believe that we also have a responsibility to helping them and guiding them. And I think they went out on their own and got education, okay, before we even did the ordinance. But the ordinance talks about educating the people or property owners or landlord associations and everybody about this. And I don't think that happened ahead of time. It's like we got the cart before the horse, instead of the horse before the cart. And I have, as I'm a new person on council, but I wanted to tell you that sometimes there's a lot of duplication in effort. And I also found in the EPA guidelines that I had received, there was a section in there that I read on EPA Local Government Reimbursement Program for Cleanup of Hazardous Substances. Well, as a city, I think we need to learn more about that too before we start doing ordinance because we don't have the money to start working out to clean up these things. But in the ordinance, it says the land, property owners will, it's all on them. So is the meth problem all their responsibility? And I just think there should be some other safety nets in there to protect the landowners or, well, maybe the landowners too, I don't know, maybe they cook in the woods. The landlord association, and there's a lot of people that rent property that aren't really part of a landlord association. And, you know, we don't, there's a lot of them out there. We don't know who they rent to. And there's a lot of things that need to be looked at before we go any deeper, and I'll hush. But I like awareness. I like training and awareness in advance, okay? And I think we need to do that. We've got a great police department. That's another thing with the task force. And they've even helped the landlords present some of this. And it was a very poor turnout on the public, and I'm sorry, council, and it was a very poor turnout with council members there also, okay? So we need to do better at this, and we need to be, do better. That's all I'm suggesting.
So this motion is to reject this ordinance?
Yes.
That's what the intent of this ordinance is to reject it?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say a plea word. I think the handwriting is on the wall here, but I don't think I could disagree any more strongly with the statements that have been made by the council members in a number of respects. One, the first being that this ordinance does not change one bit of responsibility on the part of property owners that doesn't already exist in West Virginia state code. Now, if I, my druthers, and I were writing ordinances, I might have written this one differently, is to simply just incorporate that language by reference and make this a, you know, three or four-page ordinance instead of a 13-page ordinance, as we have it. And maybe part of the problem that we have here is that people see a 13-page ordinance and it becomes a huge red flag in and of itself. But I think the council is making a huge mistake by rejecting this ordinance, by denying the city of Buckano and all property owners. And there's been, and we've been focusing on the landlords because the landlords have been the ones that have come up and have been the most vocal in opposition, or not necessarily in opposition to the ordinance, but in expressing their concerns about the subject matter behind the ordinance. But this isn't just about landlords. This is about every piece of property in the city of Buckano, whether it's owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied. So this isn't just about landlords. This applies to every piece of property. You know, I made a campaign promise to make a particular change to this, which is now appears that's about to be mooted by this vote. But I think this represents, or this will represent on our part, a retreat in the war on drugs in Buckano if we vote this ordinance down tonight. That is my opinion.
May I cross, please? I think that the success that we're going to have against the war on drugs will be better by going with a multi-county task force than writing an ordinance that, yes, you're right, it affects all of us, not just the landlords, but it affects us, I believe, in a more negative way than it does a positive way, as far as the penalties and what may happen. I know that somebody goes along my street and they throw a shake and bake on my porch, well, I'm liable and my house is contaminated.
And this ordinance doesn't change that.
Right. And I had nothing to do with it, but I still have to pay the penalties and everything as far as cleaning it up and everything.
And this ordinance wouldn't change that.
Wouldn't change that at all. But I don't see what it's going to change for the normal, everyday resident. They just don't have as much to lose as a landlord does on a whole basis.
Well, I heard, hold on, the city attorney just went through a number of, a number of things that this ordinance would provide, especially in the faster, I think that the greatest value is in the faster posting of these structures that then become uninhabitable.
I understand that the notification to the property owner comes immediately with the chief of police's report. When he sends it to Charleston, it comes immediately to the property owner or the owner of the apartment complexes or anything.
But the posting does not necessarily.
The posting, not necessarily. I realize if there's one good thing that comes from that, that is the only good thing that comes out of this ordinance, is the posting. But I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think that's a...
In my legal opinion, as attorney, that is, that is the nut of the ordinance. Everything else that's in the ordinance is, boilerplate isn't the right language, but I think everything else that is in the ordinance is secondary or tertiary to that nut, the post and the penalties for removing the posting are, I think, I mean, it only makes sense if we're going to require, if we're going to have posting, it makes some sense that you have a penalty for willfully, and that would be my amendment, willfully and intentionally violating the ordinance.
But then yet, they have told us that if they're, if it's found that that notice was posted in error or something, then the property owner is, his own expense in removing that notice.
And this ordinance doesn't change that? This doesn't, this ordinance doesn't impose that?
The night of the meth bust over at Valley Green, and there were several busts, I won't say who, but I'll admit I was one of them, went over. There was a placard that went on the door that night. The law enforcement put on the door that night.
West Virginia State Police did that. Brendan Lewis wasn't involved, and we've been led to believe that he had to do all those. I talked to the state trooper who placarded Valley Green.
We've got pictures of the placard that went on that night.
State Police never goes to Brendan Lewis's. They've always placarded there, and they placered Valley Green.
Well, listen, the state police has to do every meth, every bust.
No, but I'm just saying, my understanding up until that point was...
And they could be, and they could very well be authorized through a separate, you have, through a separate section.
But the placard went on that night. I mean, it wasn't even like the next day. It went on that night while the bust was...
We've been misled again.
Right.
Well, let's not take it, I'll just call for questions. Can I say one other thing? Yes, go ahead.
Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah.
I think we need, let's not take the, our focus away from what we're all trying to do. I mean, the discussion for the last few months, I think, has really created a lot more awareness than what we need to do for the future. Tom, I don't think it's a retreat if this ordinance is not passed tonight, that Mr. McCully, you know, read. And there's a lot of good stuff in there. So I think at some point in time, we'll address it again, maybe in a little bit different way. But I don't want to retreat from the war on drugs. If anything, I want to elevate it further.
Says they want to, I mean, but, I mean, that's, you know...
Well, yeah, but I respectfully disagree with you, Tom. I don't think it's a treat. I think it's, we want to maybe even be more aggressive in a way with the task force. And I think that's critical to look at.
I think our council has shown that we are...
Question's been called.
Question's been called.
Request roll call. We've been beating this thing and beating, beating. You request a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Question's been called. Recorder will.
So a yes vote is to defeat the ordinance?
This is a negative...
A yes vote is to...
This is a negative motion. A yes vote kills this ordinance, a no vote keeps it alive. Am I correct in that?
Yes, I think so.
Call or roll?
Mary Alba?
Yes.
Mayor Davidson?
All right.
Myself, yes. Pam Kupari?
Yes.
Tom O'Neil?
No.
Dave Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Pugh?
Yes.
Mayor Davidson, you got five, five to one.
I'll keep mine to myself.
Okay. Well, the, if you read the charter, the mayor votes in case of a tie. My vote, I see, would be grandstanding whichever way I vote. I'm grandstanding, so I'm not going to vote. I see both sides of this issue. I will say that most of what my rationale for being in support of this ordinance was that it would assist the landlords, and I think it would. But the landlords have come to us en masse and said, no, we don't want it. So they don't have it, and we'll say...
Just a quick comment. I want to let council know that we are being proactive. And Mary or someone mentioned this, I don't think, probably most of them are aware, two or three years ago, or three or four years ago, when this meth thing came up, Jill Marsh with the Landlords Association contacted Brendan Lewis. I don't even know if the police were working with Brendan at that time, way back. And he spoke to the landlords. We did have a meth awareness public seminar last week. We had some families there. We had the sheriff's department there. We had, Bill Hamilton spoke about the, pursuing the prescription drug, pseudo-fed, you know, trying to push that through. His name, Patricia Bennett. Christine, I'm sorry. Christine Bennett spoke about the HO project, and we are behind her. And I've looked at some other organizations to maybe get a drug treatment center in Upsher County. And also David Beckton was there, who is one of the, I guess, the only certified local abatement person, who actually showed us how and what they do to test. We have also talked to the sheriff's office about developing our own registry of arrested slash convicted drug abusers. And I've talked to Matt Gregory, and he's willing to work with us on developing our own registry. Would be a private registry. We're not going to throw that out there to try to hurt anybody. I did ask Matt if they'd had any, any more meth arrests in 2014. He said not to his knowledge. Doug, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there have been no meth arrests in city limits. So we had five and 13 and then, okay. And again, I'm not trying to deplete that it's not important. But I was, I was like you, I was a little bit shocked when I talked to a state trooper who I was, actually one of the city policemen, suggested I speak to him. And he, we were talking about, he said, is this about the meth thing? I said, no, we just want you to speak about the drug problem, what we can do as landlords. I actually did a handout to them, identifying all the different items with colored pictures as to what to look for, for, you know, families as well as the landlords. We gave them the procedures of what they should do, tried to be very proactive. We're going to continue to do that. We've made a commitment to meet two or three, three or four times a year, open seminars, discussing other drug problems. And we want to get rid of, we definitely, the last thing any of us want is drugs on our properties. You know, if you want to help us on this, we're willing to work with you, but none of us can see, we'd like to have some of that money that y'all were talking, that extra, to maybe start a drug, you know, cleanup matching fund, but in all seriousness, I know what you're saying.
Ah, ah, ah.
I think that's a great idea. But I did also want to say thank you to, is it Jerry that put out those beautiful planners at the corners of the streets? Jay Holland's going to let me know, but I think those are great improvement. But thank you for your consideration. Just have some faith in the landlords. We're tackling this problem. We have been before this ordinance ever came up, but thank you.
Those flowers are Robbie Barker, right there.
I think they're lovely.
Robbie Barker's an ace. He's an ace.
Let us know when your next...
We will give you notice because I think it was important. We had a lot of good information. I've gotten feedback from people that were there, saying, I'm glad I came. We getting good information, and we intend on continuing to do it. We think, and we're even looking about doing a neighborhood watch. I've talked to the police about that, maybe getting that back to where people can look out for their neighbors, their communities. I think we got to tackle it that way and help the police do their jobs. That's what we're about doing. We're trying to be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, that brings us comments and announcements. Mary Alba?
Tom, I'm with you. I'm against drugs completely, 100%. But I wanted to say to, to the people of our community that thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve as a kennel, as a kennel woman. That's what it feels like, as a city council person.
Hurtin' cat.
Yeah. And I'm not going to be the cat lady, but I appreciate that very much, and thank you. Thank you all for welcoming me.
Pam?
I just want to welcome our two new council members with us, Tom, back. We'll have some good discussions, I'm sure. And I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday weekend, be safe.
I want to echo what Mary said. I appreciate the confidence that voters put in me and allowing me to sit up here today. And it reinforces why I'm up here and why I ran. It's the cop dialogue, it's the common interest of everybody. We don't always agree, but I really appreciate the fact that you even had input into it and to sit with such great minds that I get to sit with, so thank you very much.
Tom?
Well, I certainly, I mean, I don't just, I mean, I know that we're all in this together to eradicate drugs from our community, or at least I hope that we all are. I, no, I, you know, we can see differently, you know, as far as the value of various ordinances. However, you know, I mean, that's the way, that's part of the, and that's part of the thing that I've learned being on council for the past year plus now, is that disagreements do not result in a decrease, and that we remain a very collegial and, you know, a very collegial group, which is a thing that, collegiality is something that I put an immense amount of value on. So, so don't misunderstand, you know, my, don't misunderstand what I'm saying here. I know that we're, well, I hope that our new task force, as it is established, will be empowered to placard meth houses as they are busted. We'll, maybe we can address that this way. I want to again thank at the beginning of this new fiscal year, all of our city employees, the department heads, for the fantastic job that they continue to do. The, I think it was quoted in the paper about just the fantastic management that we have, that we, that the people of this city are blessed with, as far as everyday people that, you know, come in, punch the clock, and make this city work, and I'm just happy to, happy to be part of it.
Thank you, Tom. Ron?
I'd like to welcome the two new guys on the council. And Tom, I'm very pleased to have you back, especially since I argued like hell to get you here to start with. Everybody have a safe Fourth of July, and just remember that we are here for the citizens, and I welcome any and all calls as if they didn't do that already. And God bless.
Thank you. David?
Well, I want to welcome the, actually, we had three people got elected, and they're sitting up here today. I would just throw out that I think we have a lot of challenges ahead of us as a city, and some that are new and some that I think we should revisit. And I would make one suggestion possibly, and I'm not going to state what my opinions are on anything right now, but something we might want to consider, Mayor, is have us, each one of us independently, put together a list of five or six or seven or eight things that we think are important for the city to progress and have a quality of life and lifestyle and so forth for betterment for the city. Do it independently, give it to you and the... city recorder. And look at what is the commonality of what our different positions are for the future of Buchanan. And I suggested that a few years ago, and it didn't go anywhere. But I think it's something that we ought to consider again, because I think we all have different opinions and strong opinions about things, and we don't agree. Tom, I think we do agree collegially. I appreciate that comment. And I wish everybody a wonderful holiday, Fourth of July. And remember, it's, we are an independent country, and I think we're a great country. We've got our challenges and issues too. And I know there was a huge turnout for Jim Gregory, and he's going to be evidently going to Pearl Harbor on the 5th, and I wish him and his family well.
Tom, you said you had another?
Yeah, I just was noting on the schedule, future meetings and events on July 11th, the meeting at the Airport Authority. My understanding is that that meeting will be here in council chambers and not at the county commission chamber. I just wanted to note that for the record.
That's still 7:00 AM?
It'll still, yeah. It'll still be 7:00 AM. But it'll be here in this room and not over.
All right, that mayor's comments is my turn, because a couple, three things that y'all need to know about as council, and you as well. I have not brought forth a list of appointments or reappointments, as is usual for the first meeting in July, because Mr. McCully and I have been having a discussion and prompted by, started with Dave McCully and others, and the paying board members, when they don't show up for the meetings. If they miss a meeting, maybe they shouldn't be paid. And there's some flack about that. Before we ask Dave to draft an ordinance establishing these things, I want to know what council feels about this. I know it's not on the agenda per se, but we've had discussions like this before, and at the end, we decided the one way or the other, Dave, do us an ordinance or let's forget about it. So I think if we're going to do that, if we're going to say board members, and not every person who's on a board or committee of the city, for y'all's understanding, is paid. The board members from the Water Board, the Sanitary Board, Waste Collection Board, and the Consolidated Public Works Board are paid $200 a month. Council members, by virtue of their office, are assigned to serve on one of those boards. Council members are paid $200 a month to be a council member, and they're paid $200 a month to be a member of this board. Now, if we decide as a council that we're not going to pay someone if they don't, if they miss the board meeting, they're not going to get paid. That means council member, if you miss that board meeting, you're not going to get paid. And I can say that, I believe that that's okay. It's fine with me. I will say that a council member who misses a council meeting should not be penalized, paid little enough as it is, $200 a month. But the phone calls, being stopped on the street, I can't even get away from the church or a grocery store without somebody wanting to talk about it. And I'm sure y'all experienced the same thing. Right, right. And so I think that council members should be paid their due, whether or not they attend meetings. We have in the Charter a provision whereby if we have a council member who fails to attend meetings for two consecutive months, we as a council can remove them and replace them. So, I mean, we can do that. Doesn't say we shall. It says we may. So the council has that with council members. And certainly, if we have board members who don't tend, I think I have the authority as mayor to oust them as well. So what do you say?
You want us to discuss this now?
Yeah, I want to know what you say. If you want Dave to do the ordinance, we'll do the ordinance. Question, and the reason I don't do these appointments is, we will get this appoint, we'll appoint everybody except those board members, maybe at the next meeting, and we'll wait until this ordinance takes effect, and then we'll appoint. According to our Charter, according to the enabling ordinances of those various boards, those board members serve, even if their term expires, they serve until their replacement is appointed.
Is there just not one board that must be paid by ordinance?
They, that we could research. But what I understand, and I think I'm right, Dave, I'm going to rely on you here a little bit. But the Sanitary Board is created in the state code in Chapter 16. The other boards are created in state statute in Chapter 8. Why the difference? I don't know. Nobody can explain that to me. But that board, the Sanitary Board, says that no council member can serve on that board. The mayor serves as the chairman. Let me finish this, Dave. The mayor, by that enabling ordinance and by the statute, the mayor of the city serves as chairman of the board, but no other member of council is able to serve. And it says that the board members shall be paid, shall be compensated. And so maybe we could say, okay, we're not going to compensate any board members, except for sanitary.
Can I respond to that?
Well, let me finish.
Okay. Hurry up.
You respond when I finish. You guys sitting here, and you argue all night, and I sit here and twiddle my phones, and then when I want to talk, you want to cut me off.
Well, remember, I can't tell non-vehicle communications. Just tell me when you're ready.
So here's, but I want you to give me and Dave McCully some guidance as to whether you want to do this. Now, we cannot say to one of these citizens who's serving on a board, "You're not going to get paid if you miss the meeting," and say to you, "You'll get paid and still miss the meeting."
As a council.
Say to do that.
As a council member.
No, as a board member.
As a board member.
Because you serve two roles. You serve a role as a council member for which you're paid $200. You also serve a role as a member of a board for which you're paid $200 a month. And if you miss the meeting, you don't get paid, like all the other board members. And I'm for that.
Any extenuating. You can't talk yet.
And there's another exception I make, to the boards even. And the mayor of the city serves as a chairman of all those boards. And I, you can, you can think that I'm defending me, but I'm not defending me. I'm defending the mayor of the city by cannon. Because I can tell you that the mayor's involved with all these boards day in and day out. And the fact that the mayor, mayor may not attend the meeting, should not affect the mayor's pensions and salary either. So what do you say? Now, Dave, your turn.
Are you sure?
Yep, I'm sure.
Well, I have about four or five observations or issues, that when Mr. McCully read to the council, I think it was a little over a year ago, David, or maybe not quite a year, that Pers had given us a letter saying that we could no longer pay for the pension benefits for part-time employees or board appointed individuals. I was sort of shocked at that point in time that we were paying a number of board members. I wasn't aware of that. And that's just my ignorance or stupidity, what have you. But I think that, you know, another question to be asked is, why was the city putting people on listed as full-time employees so they were getting the pension plan benefit? That's beyond my comprehension, quite frankly. But I think $200 for sitting on a board for one hour, one and a half hour, is ridiculous. I think it's financially indefensible. I think a problem you have is, why are some people paid money and some others are not? I think that's not defensible either. I don't know what the rationale is. I'd like to know what it is. I think that if you don't attend a meeting, and you're still being paid, I think that's financially irresponsible. So I think, you know, I've talked to some of the board members have been paid, and they said they weren't aware they're going to get paid until after they started serving. I think we need to look at it in a greater context. Why are we paying some boards and other boards? Why is a compensation of $200 when most of the boards only meet for an hour, hour and a half per month? It just doesn't make sense to me financially. So I think we ought to have an ordinance that is going to deal with this in a more financially responsible way, and that's more defensible to our citizens. I mean, we're spending about $18,000 a year on paying board members that probably don't really need to be paid. We have a lot of volunteers meeting. Or why are we paying some and not the others?
Good question. Ron, your turn.
I'm just wondering if there would be any extenuating circumstances, such as sickness or something like that.
Well, that's part of the discussion.
So you go on vacation, you get a, I mean, I think you got to do it one way.
Who decides? We have them, is why I thought of that.
We don't, shouldn't have sick leave for one hour, one hour or one and a half hour per month, in my opinion.
We as elected officials don't have sick.
Eric, can I say?
Please do, David.
When I became the city attorney 31-plus years ago, in 1983, there were five paid boards with the city by cannon. There was the current Sanitary Board, Waste Collection Board, used to be the Garbage Board way back in the 50s. They've been, they've been paying the Garbage Board members since 1952, 53. The Water Board, there was the Off-Street Parking Board and the Cemetery Board. Somewhere along the way, particularly the Off-Street Parking Board, came to meet once every three or four months, whether they needed to or not. I think the compensation back then was 50 bucks a month.
Twenty-five.
It was 20 bucks, then it went to 50, then to 100, then 200.
When I was mayor, it pretty much like it was 20 bucks.
Went from 50 to 200 in 2004, I believe, David.
I think it went from 50 to 100 to 200. But anyway, the point is, is that the allocation, the establishment of those five boards was all done, those are separate statutory entities. Sometimes we give things the title of ward or commission, and they are not the same as those statutory self-incorporated entities. Three of the four of our utility boards are required to be separately incorporated under state statute. And the West Virginia Public Service Commission requires the members of a revenue generating entity to be compensated. Now, they don't say how much, but they got to be compensated. The allocation of those five boards was so that there could be some legitimacy landed to paying city council members more than that major, what I think then was 50 bucks a month. Got to remember that 32 years ago, council members made $50 a month to be a council member, and $50 a month to be a board member. And what we saw out of that was a couple of things. And with all due respect to the council members who served prior to the period of time with salaries being increased, you didn't always get the best pool of folks who were running for council when the salary was as major as what it was. And as we did a survey, we looked around at what Bridgeport and Elkins and Clarksburg and other communities around us were paying. And those increases, as they have come about for the mayor, the city recorder, and council members, as we've tried to keep in line, we shouldn't be any worse off in Bridgeport or Elkins for the most part. Maybe you don't make as much as a city council member in Charleston or Wheeling, they're bigger places, but you get the idea. The allocation of council members to those four utility boards was so that there would be this second job created for every person. Sanitary Board is, the way that that body is constituted, as the mayor noted, is under Chapter 16. And it says, "There shall be three members of the Sanitary Board. One member at large, if there's a current bond issue going on, has to be an engineer on that board, and the mayor." And that's it. Three-member board, no more, no less. And who they are, that membership is specifically detailed. The other boards, there's great flexibility. Public Service Commission has very loose rules and regulations. And as Mayor noted, under Chapter 8, easy to, easy to set those boards up any way you want to. What you can't do is have certain members of a board that would be compensated more or less than the other board members. To do otherwise would be to be arbitrary and capricious. And those of you who have been around this place or any time at all, have heard me preach probably hundreds of times over the years, the government can't be arbitrary, can't be capricious. So you can't pay a Dave Thomas to be on the Consolidated Public Works Board, 200 bucks a month, and somebody like a Don Nestor or a Mark Waldo, zilch, zip, nothing. It just doesn't work that way. So again, we're back to the allocation of council members, which works out very well the way we've got it. You got the city recorder, who serves on all the boards, ex officio reporter of all those boards, and derive some compensation for doing the minutes for those boards. The council members, combined with the thinking, and the Public Service Commission recommends this, relative to public utilities, it's a great idea to have public, non-elected members, regular citizens on those boards who are going to provide their input, because they might be maybe just a little bit more savvy sometimes relative to what the average Joe on the street would want. Other four-year term, you get the, I mean, you could do that for the next mayor, but you can't do it for this mayor.
Right. Well, David, I'll take issue with a couple of things. One, I think we are arbitrary and capricious in a lot of things we do as a city. And I'm not going to go into position where I think we are. I'll do that in the next couple of council meetings. But, you know, it was sort of shocking to me that a person is sitting in a meeting for one or two hours, sometimes a half an hour, gets on the pension for the state. I mean, that's an issue that probably.
And that's another issue.
But that's another, that's an issue. So I don't think the system has worked that well. But I do think we ought to go where the school board is. If you don't attend the meeting, you don't get paid, period. And if we think as a city that we are doing our citizens right by paying individuals that are not attending meetings, I think that's wrong. And I think we ought to go where the school board does. And if it takes an ordinance that you and the mayor have to do that, I would promote that. I think that's a step in the right direction. I won't change the $200. I think it's too high for appointed board members. And I question why we pay some and not the others. You've given a background, but, you know, that was 33 years ago and 50-some years ago. Sometimes we need to change things.
I attended the West Virginia Municipal League Meeting, Stuart Margolis, who we all know about, was A. James Manson's state treasurer, and is a right-hand man. And Mr. Margolis encouraged the folks, because I was the keynote speaker that year, on ethics in local government. And Stuart Margolis was there, and he urged the municipalities in attendance at that meeting to offer PEIA benefits to all of their employees, no matter what they did, that this was a good thing for the state of West Virginia and to reward public service and the whole bit. And J.D. Hinkle, who was one of our former mayors, I mean, he was, back in the 60s and 70s, he signed board members up for PEIA benefits. And this was done statewide. They removed some 4,000 people.
I wouldn't say a board member that's working for one or two hours a month is an employee. He's a board member. There's a difference. But that's what it sounds like.
Like I said, that's an argument for another day. I think Dave's giving us his pre-lesson.
State treasurer used to advocate. So you got to, you got to understand. State treasurer used to advocate, so, I mean, you gotta, you gotta understand the genesis of it. The state treasurer used to advocate.
Well, I don't want to talk about.
So, do you want, so, I think what I'm hearing is that maybe you want us to draft something for your consideration?
Yep.
Okay. That, that takes care of that. I would like to offer all of you, I do this, I have done this every year that I've been mayor, I maybe haven't done it this way, but I'm gonna do it this way. If you would like to rearrange our seating, we've got new council members here, you let me know, we'll talk about it. I will give preference based on seniority, okay? You can, we'll shuffle if you want to shuffle. Let me know. The, also, we have a vacancy in the Consolidated Public Works Board. If any one of you would like to move to that board, you can move to that board, and a member on the totem pole had to go wherever you vacate. So, that's an offer, if you want to go to Consolidated and give up the one you're on, let me know, and we'll take care of it.
Tell them that will put up with me.
Yeah, yeah. One other thing, one other.
Thursday.
Still my turn, one other thing. Municipal League meeting is coming up in August, begins the 13th. There are registration forms here, Michael has access to them, Ambie has access to them, and it's at the conference center at, what's the point?
Bridgeport.
What's the point?
New Point.
Charles Point.
Charles Point, Charles Point. Typically, we, we provide travel, accommodations, mileage, meals, and all that sort of thing. It is my suggestion, we do not authorize anyone staying overnight, it's Bridgeport, for crying out loud, we can drive. Now, I have, I know some officials who have spent nights at Holiday Inn in Bridgeport, on the taxpayers, you know.
Those were county officials.
Those were county officials, yep, those were county officials. We know who they were, don't we?
We do.
And we'll leave it at that. We also had county officials who wanted to stay at the Stonewall Jackson Resort during meetings, rather than commute. Now, I, my suggestion is that we say, we'll, we'll pay your mileage, up and back, and certainly registration fee, and, and any meals that are not covered under your registration, and everyone that wants to go can go.
I'm gonna stay in Bridgeport.
Yeah. You're gonna stay in Bridgeport?
I got a daughter that lives there.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna get you a room comp.
Yeah.
I think it's particularly important for our city recorder to go to that with you.
Well, I do, yeah, I would like for all of you, I, I put great stock in the Municipal League. Now, I will not be there this year, because I told you all, I'm taking a check mark off my bucket list, and I'm going to the Little League World Series, and I've already paid for my campground fees, because you gotta pay it in advance, and there's no refund. And they used to have the Municipal League first weekend in August. So, I will not be there, but, but I do believe, and I say this to all of you, I say this to council members, that Municipal League is our organization, it's the organization that represents not only councils, but all the citizens of this state. And attendance at those conferences, there's, there's good information in the meetings, but there's also a wealth of information to collect in establishing networks, and meeting, and working, and playing with people in other municipalities around the state. You learn a lot, you establish connections, I think it's well worth our money and time. So, I'm done. Is anybody else kicking in?
Well, you were seven years, you were seven years old, seven years old on Sunday.
Yeah, I was seven years, I'm officially old.
If anyone wants to go, just contact us, so we can get you all scheduled.
We've got to get some, we do have to pay a registration fee, so let us know. All that said and done, we're done, thank you all very much.